All right. Good evening. Welcome to this March 7th Sammamish Planning Commission meeting. We're here at the City Council chambers in Sammamish. And we have an exciting topic tonight, so let's get started. First, we'll do roll call, starting on my right.
Zain Dapuri.
Eric Brooks.
Mark Baughman.
Josh Hamato.
Roshi No Pharoah.
And Mark Lewis.
Great. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I'd like to see if we can... Well, approval of the agenda first. Thank you. Thank you, Ratuja. For the agenda and the minutes, I'd like to see if we can use unanimous consent for approval, unless anybody has a concern about that. So, the way this works is, I'll ask if there are any objections to approving these sort of check the box items. And if you have an objection, please speak up, or if you have a correction, please speak up. And if not, then we'll move on. Hopefully, in the future, that'll kind of keep things moving a little bit, okay? Or you can absolutely make comments. All right. So, next is approval of the agenda. Are there any objections to approving this evening's agenda as presented?
Yep.
Seeing no objections, the agenda is approved. Next is approval of the minutes from the February 21st meeting. Do you have any comments about the minutes from the February 21st meeting? Are there any objections to approving the minutes as presented from the February 21st Planning Commission meeting? Seeing no objections, the minutes from the February 21st meeting are approved. Next on the agenda is public comment for non-agenda items. This is three minutes per person, five minutes for an organization. This is for a non-agenda item. And now that we actually have someone in the chambers with us, I'll ask, does anyone want to make any public comment on a non-agenda item?
Public.
Okay. No one? No one. Great. So, our next item on the agenda is an item of old business in the main topic for this evening, which is, we're going to have a presentation on the concurrency and level service strategy that's been suggested, and then we'll do a public hearing. So, let's move on to the presentation.
Great. Well, thank you Chair Baughman. As most of you know, and I hope you can hear me, I'm going to stretch here. My name is Kelly Hildy. I am the Planning Manager here at the city of Sammamish. I'm joined tonight with Cheryl Paston, our interim Public Works Director, and Kendra Braylon with Farron Peers. Tonight, the Planning Commission will be holding a public hearing and voting on a recommendation on the interim development regulations for chapters 14A-05, 14A-10, and 21A-15 of the Sammamish municipal code. If we do that... Oh, okay. As the next slide is being brought up, the order of events for tonight's public hearing includes receiving a presentation by staff. And if we can go to slide two. Opening the public hearing, receiving public comment, closing the public hearing, and deliberating and voting on a recommendation to City Council. Your role tonight... Next slide. Your role tonight is to review the proposed revisions to the interim development regulations, including road corridor and segment level of service standards, volume to capacity ratios for principal and minor arterials, and administrative and code reference updates and corrections. Again, after you review and hold the public hearing, you will deliberate and vote on a recommendation to City Council. And with that, I am going to pass it on to my colleague Cheryl to give you a one-on-one on concurrency and level of service.
Thanks, Kelly. Good evening, Chair. Planning Commissioners, it's good to be back. It's been a little while since we've been here. And actually, I'm not going to have to say much. Kendra is going to actually carry most of the presentation tonight. I'll just go over quickly the timeline, the most recent timeline. This has actually been in the process for, oh, going on two years almost, maybe a year and a half. But back in September of last year, the council did adopt part of the concurrency policy, which was intersections only. And then in November, at that meeting, the council directed staff to go back and reevaluate putting some of the segments and corridors back into the concurrency program, which is actually why we're here tonight. So, we came back on November 20th. The council did adopt an emergency ordinance, which was ordinance 2018-477, which did add segments and corridors. We came back to the Planning Commission in early December to give you sort of a primer on concurrency and levels of service. Because it was an emergency ordinance that was adopted, we had to come back to the council within 60 days of them adopting the ordinance to hold a public hearing, which we did on January 15th. And then, as part of the process, we have to come back again to the Planning Commission officially and request that you conduct a public hearing, which is why we're here tonight. But as part of the public hearing, because it has been a while since we came and introduced concurrency and level of service, and mostly because there are, I think, three new commissioners, and it is a pretty complicated topic, so we decided we'd come back and go over, again, the basics of concurrency 101, and then specifically kind of talk about the adopted level of service for intersections, and then the corridors and segments that is currently in front of you for review. So, that's tonight. And then, we will schedule another council work session, and then we'll have a public hearing that will probably be on May 21st. So, with that, I am going to hand it over to Kendra, and she'll take us the rest of the way on concurrency and LOS 101, and then we'll come back with the actual code revisions, which Kelly will walk you through.
Good evening, Commission. Sure, I'm on here. Good evening, Commission. Again, my name is Kendra Braylon, and I'm here from Farron Peers, working closely with city staff. And before I go into this presentation, I wanted to give you the opportunity, ask any questions as I go through. Happy to elaborate on points. I'm really pleased that not only are there some familiar faces up there on the dais, but also of the new planning commissioners. I know a lot of you have done your homework and have gone back and listened to that December presentation. So, given that there is a lot of repeat between this presentation and what we provided in December, I'm going to keep my remarks fairly brief. But if there's anything you'd like more information on, I'm more than happy to pause, elaborate, and answer those questions. So, just first of all, the primary topic of why we're here, level of service and the city's concurrency program. So, just at a high clip, what are these terms? What do they mean? First of all, the state requires all cities to establish level of service standards for their key transportation facilities. And so, what are level of service standards? They're essentially, a community sets an objective of how it wants its facilities to perform. So, here in Sammamish, and we'll get into more detail later, but we do have standards about how long drivers should wait at an intersection. So, the city has established standards for that. So, it really kind of sets the parameters for what is the allowable delay at an intersection? How should it be performing over time? What is our community's hope? And then, also, the city has established level of service standards for kind of the volume to capacity ratio. So, how many cars should be on a given roadway, given its capacity, over a period of time? And again, that's related to congestion. So, the state kind of gives communities broad parameters on how they set those level of service standards. Sammamish has picked some, we'll go into it. Other communities pick other ones. But the important thing is that it's really putting a line in the sand in terms of what we consider as a community to be acceptable transportation operations. So, concurrency is really just the state's way of making sure that communities are maintaining what they say they're going to achieve in their comprehensive plans over time. So, again, we establish level of service standards, we write those down in our comprehensive plans, and state's concurrency law just says, as the community grows, as you accept development, you need to ensure that you are maintaining those level of service standards while you allow development to come into your community. So, we'll talk about that concurrency standard at length in the next couple of slides. And the last piece here, and really just concurrency is just a checks and balances, so just making sure as development comes in that we're kind of maintaining what we said we were going to do. But the last piece is really that the state provides communities with a tool to help maintain concurrency over time, and that's impact fees. So, as you know, I think you all know on the dais, that Sammamish has an transportation impact fee program. It's one of the highest in the state. I think it is the highest in the state. And it helps the community to essentially, so that growth pays for growth. So, it helps you to pay for transportation facilities over time. So, who has to... Who is subject to concurrency? As development comes in, really, the city's code says that all development that generates trips is subject to concurrency tests. So, that's not just a single-family home that's coming in, or apartment complex, but it's also commercial square footage, retail square footage. So, anything that really generates a trip, you could even think of it maybe as a park. Those are all things that the city is looking at what its trip generation is. And we've got on the slide here some of the exempted uses that aren't subject to concurrency assessments, right-of-way use, street use permits, some of those things that generally minor residential expansions, things that we don't think would generate substantial number of trips. So, we've got a kind of a cool little schematic here showing how concurrency is measured. And you can kind of just see, as you look at this, go through the flow chart in terms of the process. So, any development that generates trips needs to come kind of to your permit counter over here, and they receive an app... Or they provide an application for concurrency. And that application gets routed through to your city staff. And then, they evaluate kind of the concurrency application to see what its impact, what the trips generated by that development, how it's going to impact your system. So, they take the relevant information out of that development, that application, the type of development, the quantity, for example, the square footage, and they use that to develop an estimate of the number of trips that will be estimated, or that will be generated. And then, those trips are then added into your city's transportation model to look at how transportation facilities will continue to operate with that development in place. And so, if your facilities are not meeting the city's standard, the city can deny that application. If your facilities are meeting the standard, then they issue a concurrency certificate, and the development can move forward, which includes paying its impact fee. And I will put in here, in terms of the concurrency failures, there's a number of choices that can happen. State law doesn't really care what happens. All state concurrency law states is that you're meeting your concurrency standards, so you're maintaining that level of service standard. So, there's a number of choices that happen when a development causes an intersection or a roadway segment to fail. The city could choose to program in an improvement that would make that intersection or that roadway segment pass. The developer could elect to put in an improvement that would make that facility to pass, or again, that application could be denied. The city maintains a travel demand forecasting model, or traffic model. Just some basic details about the city's traffic model. It provides traffic forecasts for both AM and the PM peak hours. So, that AM peak hour actually looks at the time generally when schools are letting into session, so seven to eight in the morning. The PM peak hour is kind of that afternoon period. I think it's 4:45 to 5:45 PM, but it provides a forecast of how many cars are on your roadways during those periods. The model provides forecasts for both intersections and roadway segments, and it has some different snapshots in time that it looks at. 2016 is the base year for that model. I know that we're in 2019 now, that might feel like it's a little bit in the past, but that's pretty standard for communities. They don't update their model every single year. So, 2016 is still considered relatively recent. 2024 is your pipeline model. So, the model provides a forecast looking out six years. And what the six-year look is really what we use for concurrency assessments, and it looks at all of the approved development within the city. And also, it considers your funded six-year transportation improvement program. So, those projects that you intend to construct over the next six years. And so, when you're doing a concurrency assessment, it takes into account both the growth we expect in the near future, as well as the transportation improvements that Sammamish intends to construct. And the one other piece I would add to that is it also takes into account regional growth. So, it actually does have some assumptions for how much growth is also occurring in neighboring Isqwa and Redmond, and how that might also be influencing Sammamish's roads over the next six years. The last kind of horizon of that model is 2035. So, that's your comprehensive plan horizon. So, it's looking out kind of roughly 20 years, and helping you to understand what are the needs over that longer-term horizon. City maintains that model, updates land uses as needed on the concurrency model. It's pretty regular that those land uses are being updated to reflect new development applications. The roadway network is updated periodically to reflect updated assumptions about projects that will be constructed. And then, as I mentioned already, there's some regional traffic growth assumptions. So, it's a pretty technical tool that the city uses. It's kind of the state of the practice. Many, many communities have their own travel model. I will say that Sammamish is probably more detailed and rigorous than most other communities. So, the city actually, while the city maintains a model, it does have an on-call traffic consultant, David Evans and Associates, who runs that model. So, when concurrency applications come in the door, they come first to Stephen Chen, who's in your Public Works Department, and he works closely with that on-call traffic engineer to perform those concurrency assessments. And the concurrency assessments, again, they're looking at the AM and PM peak hour, they're looking at the performance of 43 intersections within the city, as well as along several roadway corridors and segments. And actually, it's 14 corridors. We'll go into kind of the standards for those in a couple of slides. And those 14 corridors include 43 segments within them. So, kind of your corridors are a combination of multiple segments. So, for example, Isqwa-Pine Lake Road, for example, might be a section of that, might be a quarter, and within that, there may be three or four segments that comprise that overall quarter. So, if there's not questions, I'll continue on. So, going into your level of service standards that have been adopted or are being looked at, first of all, intersections, as I mentioned, there are 43 intersections within the city, and they are measured generally by average delay experience per vehicle. We'll go into a little bit more detail in the next slide. And then, as I mentioned, over the last fall, council added the consideration of roadway segments and corridors to the mix. And so, those are measured based on a comparison of traffic volumes to an estimated capacity along those segments. And one thing we'll highlight, there's an asterisk on here, we'll show you kind of where those segments are in the city. We will note that Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway has been excluded from the analysis. And again, it's not, the city's not watching Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway closely, but there's a recognition that that roadway is not something that we're really able to widen. Its cross-section is kind of fixed by the surrounding land uses, the lake, et cetera.
And if I can jump in, even though we're not measuring through the concurrency program the performance of the roadway, there are intersections that are concurrency intersections on ELSP. So, it's not like we're not monitoring them at all. And we do, you know, we keep an eye on what's going on on the Parkway. We do take traffic counts on the Parkway. It's just not part of the concurrency program.
So, the intersection level of service standard, it helps us to, again, determine if the impacts of a proposed development can be met with...
Sorry, Kendra. I beg your pardon for interrupting. Just Cheryl, on that last point, when we say we've excluded Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway, and I understand why we've done that, but does that mean then, as a developer, if you're going to develop a piece of property on that road, that you don't have to pass a concurrency test?
No, you... And I'll explain that. So, if you're a developer and you're on Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway, it's the same process that we've explained, you know, just shown. So, you come in with your application, that's modeled, and they look at your trip generation on all of the roadway segments and intersections throughout the city that are subject to concurrency. It's just that Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway, there's not a volume to capacity threshold that has been set.
Okay, to say that it's failing or passing.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Perfect. This slide just kind of is introducing intersection level of service, just some key details. Intersection level of service is actually the most typical level of service standard and concurrency measure used by communities in Washington State, particularly cities. And the reason for that is that when you think about an urban system, your intersections are generally where you have your most major pinch points. So, it was considered something that council really was interested in, and it's probably one of your best measures of kind of driver experience within the city. And the level of service standards, as I'll explain on the next slide, really do vary by intersection control type. So, the amount of delay that is considered acceptable is different at an intersection that's controlled by stop signs than maybe an intersection that's controlled by a traffic signal or a roundabout. And the level of service thresholds that I'll show on the next slide, these are really based in national standards that are used all over the place by transportation engineers and planners. So, city's intersection level of service standard, generally, a level of service D for intersections that are along principal arterials. But there is kind of an exception to that, that where we have an intersection that we need to widen greatly to be on three approach lanes, or three lanes on any approach, the city will consider level of service E acceptable in those cases. And that's really kind of balancing delay considerations with other considerations in kind of the urban form. You know, there's an interest in not making our intersection so large that they're impacting the character of Sammamish, or they're so, so large that pedestrians are really vulnerable as they're crossing those facilities. So, that's been an interest. So, to orient you to the table that you're looking at here, you can see the level of service standard, or level of service A, B, C, D, E, F, kind of on your left-hand side. And what you see in those two columns to the right are the, kind of the thresholds of seconds of delay for drivers that are allowable under each of those kind of level of service thresholds. So, when we talk about a level of service D for principal arterials, what we're saying, as you can see, most of those intersections are going to be signalized or roundabouts. And so, we're saying that it's acceptable for a driver to wait, on average, up to about 55 seconds, so a little short of a minute, when they approach one of those intersections. And that's the average. Some drivers are waiting a little longer, some drivers are waiting a little less. But that's kind of the threshold that is set. And so, when we recognize that, hey, if we have to widen the intersection greatly beyond three lanes, that's kind of why the city said, well, maybe let's increase that allowable delay to 80 seconds, so a minute 20 seconds. So, it's an extra, yes, 25 seconds, but it's an extra 25 seconds that's permitted in the interest of keeping our intersections reasonably sized for a suburban community.
Kendra, I have a quick question. So, this is for peak hours only, right?
Correct. Correct. Yes. So, we, when we measure this, we're looking at the AM and PM peak hours. So, those are the times when your roadways are the busiest. So, during the middle of the day, middle of the night, times that are outside of the peak hours, you would anticipate that drivers are generally waiting less time than the maximum thresholds that are allowed.
And can you refresh my memory? What are the peak times again?
They are, in our comprehensive plan identified as seven to eight o'clock in the morning, and 4:45 to 5:45. The seven to eight AM is really recognizing that that's when most of the schools in Sammamish start in that period. Not all of them, of course, but most of them start within that period. And then, 4:45 to 5:45 generally coincides with that busy time in the afternoon when a lot of people are getting home from work, people are heading out for dinner, people are still getting picked up from school activities, so that's when you've got a lot of folks on the road.
Thank you.
The last thing I would identify here is that the level of service, the allowable delay at minor and collector arterials is less, it's level of service C. So, you can see, it's less delay. If you're looking at a signalized intersection, we're talking about no more than 35 seconds on average. If we're at an un-signalized intersection, then we're talking about no more than 25 seconds on average. So, and that, generally, that standard's fairly achievable for the city, because these are more minor roads, don't tend to have as much congestion, and so, the standard's a pretty typical one for communities. So, here's where your concurrency intersections are in the city, that you can see on the slide. And just to orient you, all those green dots are intersections that, as of the 2016 analysis, were meeting your standard. And those red locations in the city are locations that, as of 2016, the intersections were not meeting the standard. But many of these intersections, you'll notice, you see there's some along Isqwa Falls City Road. The city actually has capital improvement plans, for example, the Isqwa Falls City Road Improvement Project, that will be addressing that within the six-year horizon.
So, this is based on the model that was before what we have right now?
This is based on counts that were collected in 2016.
Which model was being used to, or which concurrency calculation was being used to measure this?
This is actually existing counts. We do have a, I think, there's a couple of models to talk about here. One is a traffic operations synchro model. So, how this analysis was done is counts were collected in 2016. Those counts, and also things like signal timing, all of the variables about those intersections were input into a traffic operations model. I think, Ratuja, the model that you're asking about is the travel demand forecasting model. And where I mentioned there was that 2016, the 2024, and the 2035 time horizon. We actually didn't use the 2016 model for this. The 2016 model, the reason why the city has that, is to have a good baseline for developing those forecasts to 2024 and 2035. So, travel forecasting models, the whole point of them is to help us understand what the future beholds. But the first step that, you know, any good practicing traffic engineer or traffic planner is going to do is to build a base year model that can reasonably replicate existing year conditions. Because if it can't, then you got a problem, then you don't trust the outcomes of your model. We're very fortunate here in Sammamish that our travel demand forecasting model does a marvelous job of reflecting existing conditions. And so, generally, for this 2016 analysis, it was just simply counts and real-world conditions that were input into your traffic operations model. As we start talking about the 2024 and later-on results, those are using your city's traffic model.
If I could jump in also, and maybe part of your question was, what standard did we use? It was the table that we just showed you. So, those are the adopted current intersection standards that the model used to determine whether they passed or failed. I also want to highlight that all of the red intersections are addressed in the six-year tip. So, I think there was a question wanting, asking for a map showing the failures at 2024, so there are no failures, assuming that we implement all the projects in the six-year tip.
All right, I'll continue on to roadway segments. So, roadway segment LOS applies to the city's minor, or principal minor and collector arterials. Similar to intersection level of service, we're also doing a snapshot in time, understanding what conditions are during those peak hours. So, the hours are specifically outlined here. Again, it's that seven to eight, and the 4:45 to 5:45 PM. And then, it's an assessment of traffic volumes compared to a calculated capacity. And the estimated capacity comes from a variety of factors, the number of lanes on the roadway, its speed, whether or not there's a median or a center turn lane, and other roadway features like ITS, whether or not that's in place. And the level of service standard, again, as is laid out on the slide, is really a ratio of the traffic volume to an adopted roadway capacity. So, we'll go into more detail about that in the next couple of slides, if you're scratching your... your head a little bit, and we'll talk about how that's derived. The corridors, corridors, as we mentioned earlier, we've got roadway segments and we've got corridors. So corridors are comprised of one or more segments. I think in all cases, the corridors include multiple segments. And the corridor volume to capacity ratio is really based on a weighted average of the VCs, volume to capacity ratios along the segments. And when we look at segment LOS and corridor LOS, essentially, we allow for segment LOS standard to be up to 1.4. So it's saying, when you're looking at the peak hour volumes on that roadway, they can be up to 40% higher than the calculated capacity of that roadway segment. And we'll talk a little bit about that calculated capacity. Calculated capacity is based on some national assumptions of the capacity that's provided by all those roadway features I talked about earlier. We know that driver behavior can really influence how a roadway operates. So here in Samamish, even though we do have some roadways that are kind of even today, up in that kind of 1.0 to 1.1 area, we know that the roadways are still functioning, they may be very busy, but we're not at kind of standstill conditions. And then for corridors, again, because that's multiple segments weighted together, the standard is to be no more than 1.1. So the recognition here is that you might have an individual segment that can get up to 1.4, so a higher congestion level. But over a longer stretch of that roadway, we want to make sure that congestion levels aren't exceeding that 1.1. So, so getting into kind of how this capacity is derived, we've got a little flow chart here. I'm glad you guys all have computer screens in front of you, because I think it's kind of hard to see on the screen. But the capacity is calculated by kind of a combination of two very standardized methods. First is the Highway Capacity Manual Sixth Edition. So that's kind of the, we call it the Traffic Engineers' Bible. It is the ultimate kind of national standard to use for kind of this type of analysis. When we were bringing that methodology forward to council, there was some frustration that the HCM Sixth Edition wasn't sensitive enough to some roadway characteristics. It didn't give enough capacity bumps for the presence of turn lanes. It didn't provide capacity bumps for things like ITS or flashing yellow arrows that we know provide additional capacity and can really help drivers. So given that interest to recognize how some of these spot treatments can really influence the roadway's performance, we augmented that using some variables that are provided by the Florida Department of Transportation, as that's kind of out there beyond the HCM. That's probably the next best-known source of kind of traffic engineering guidance. So just in looking at kind of what we do as we're going through this process, we start by looking at the roadway segment. What is its, what are its characteristics? Does it have right turn lanes? Does it have left turn lanes? Is there a median? Is there ITS in place? Is there flashing yellow arrows? And using kind of those characteristics, we calculate a capacity. And then we compare it to the hourly, that, that calculated capacity is kind of what we would assume to be that hourly flow rate that can be accommodated on a roadway segment in a given direction, and then we compare that to the counts. So in doing that calculation, when we look at our 2016 counts within the city, so again, these are counts, these aren't modeled numbers, what we find is there are really only a few facilities in the city that, on the roadway segment level, have failures. So the first is Sahali Way, the 228th North Corridor. And as you look at that, you might go, huh, all of the segments are meeting their standard. I don't, you know, the red is where you've got a failure and the green are the passes. But overall, you can see that in the AM peak hour, in the northbound direction, our volume to capacity ratio is a 1.12. So with a 1.1 standard, that is a failure. The other segment that's got a failure that you can see on the screen is Isqwa Falls City Road Corridor. And you can see that there is a failure in the westbound direction, again, in the AM peak hour, essentially between 245th and Clohanni Drive. That's, that, that failure is actually something that we address in the near future with the Isqwa Falls City Road project. So when you're looking at these failures that we have in 2016, really, it's only this Sahali Way failure that we're still grappling with solutions to. So looking into 2024 conditions, again, as we described earlier, what we do here to forecast what's going on in 2024, the model has been loaded up with all of the development that's been approved and is expected to be in place by 2024. It's also been loaded up with all of the traffic, you know, kind of projects that the city has got in place. And when we do that comparison, it's really only this Sahali Way corridor segment that's, or corridor that, north corridor that's got a concurrency issue, which is the one that, you know, we're still kind of grappling with solutions to. So here's a map. I think the chair asked for us just to kind of give you a sense of where these exist. So you can see at the top, the Sahali Way segment. So as you can see, it's a pretty long segment. This is where Sahali Way is essentially leading out to the, the, the north end of the city. So that's, of course, been a, a topic of conversation for the city for a very long time, and one that I think the city is really thinking seriously about what are the appropriate fixes to that, that corridor. And then the other segment, as we mentioned, is Isqwa Falls City Road at the south end of the city, and that's the one that will be addressed through the Isqwa Falls City Road Capital Project. I think I've already kind of gone into the, the differences here, so I won't belabor the point. But 2016 is just the development that we had on the time, the roadway network that was on the time. And again, the 2024, when we're looking at what's, you know, in those numbers, it takes into account permitted and constructed projects throughout the city. And when we think about the town center, a typical question we get is, is this everything in the town center that's been, that, that could be in that long-term plan? And no, the answer is the 2024 only includes what's already been permitted to date. And then it also includes kind of regional growth that we might anticipate over the next six years. So that's it. I think I'll pass it over to Kelly.
So Kendra, one, one fairly, this may be digging into the details a bit, but in the forecast model, where is the source of the data that says this is how many trips? So somebody comes in and says, I want to build a multifamily structure that has 200 departments. What source of data is there that says this is how many trips will be generated by that development?
Perfect.
And puts it on the roadway?
Yes.
For the forecast?
The Institute of Traffic Engineering Manual is, it kind of, trip generation manual is the basic source. So that's the default source that the city would tend to use if you come with a development. Developers do have the opportunity that if they can really convey to the city that, hey, look, my development's different. It, you know, we have a mix of uses, more development's going to stay on site, there's a different demographic that's in this development. If they can justify to the city that it might have a different trip generation than the ITE manual would suggest, then they are free to do that. But generally, the default assumption is that the ITE trip generation manual is used.
Thanks.
Which is national data.
And I just had a tangent question to this. So Kendra, when you mentioned 2024, it's assuming that everything that is on the TIP has been addressed. Is that right, Sher? And that we're assuming that all that is funded?
Everything on the TIP, this, the funded six-year TIP, correct. Transportation improvement.
Right. And that's based on the current estimates that we have?
Technically, the council does not adopt a six-year budget, but for want of a better word, yes, the, the, all of the capital projects that are on our six-year tip are assumed to have been constructed by the end of 2024. So all of those improvements are in the, in the pipeline model. Does that, does that help?
Well, I'm just trying to understand the funding part of it. So what if, you know, we don't get grants, or if we can't, if we don't, if the city does not have the budget to construct a certain segment, what happens to our forecast then? And do segments and corridors or intersection LOS, does that start failing? And how, I mean, we're looking into 2024, assuming everything gets done, but as we've seen from the past, it's, it's really difficult to get all these projects done. So that's what I'm trying to understand, how realistic is that? Or is that, I mean, maybe that's the best you can do, but I just wanted to understand that funding aspect.
Sure, that's always a, a topic of, a topic of conversation between, within public works and with finance as well. And that certainly is, is something that our interim city manager and hopefully our soon-to-be permanent city manager will certainly be working with the council, because there are a lot of needs, as you all know, not just related to transportation, that the city is, will need to grapple with and, and in some cases is grappling with right now. As far as the, the six-year tip, there are options that the council can, can take. One is they cannot fund the projects that aren't concurrency projects and just funnel all of the, all of the resources to concurrency projects only. They can certainly do that. They could, I suppose, push a concurrency project out beyond six years, and we would have to rerun our model to see, okay, what would that do? Would that increase failures and where would that, where would that happen? They could look at other funding sources that, that's within the control of the council, the council and/or the residents within the city.
And another question, maybe which it might be not relevant to this, but I hear a lot about autonomous vehicles and that, you know, they are going to start being on our streets pretty soon. Have you guys, working with other cities, started using that as a variable when you're doing your calculations?
So I'll say that as of right now, the modeling that's been performed for this project hasn't taken that into account. But it's a very good question as we start thinking forward to 2035. So we're, you know, in the six-year horizon, it's, it's unlikely that autonomous vehicles are going to greatly influence kind of the traffic capacity and flow on our streets. But when you start looking out over a longer period of time, I think that's a very, very reasonable question. That's actually something that our firm has been doing for a number of communities, is looking at, with different scenarios, kind of bookending, what might autonomous vehicles do to kind of the way that streets perform? Because there's a lot of variables at place. One, autonomous vehicles might lead to more cars on the road, as people are having their autonomous vehicle do errands for them. But the other thing to keep in, keep in mind is autonomous vehicles might also be more efficient. And it also depends on the policies that get put in place over the years for autonomous vehicles. City of Portland will give an example. They've been really interested in autonomous vehicles, but thinking about how can we put in a regulatory framework where they're all fleet-owned and they're electric? What they're trying to think about is how can we make more of an autonomous vehicle utopia instead of a dystopia? So I think those are incredible questions. And I think as we move into the TMP, I think particularly in a very affluent community like Samamish of early adopters that you have in your community, I think that's something we need to be mindful of.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, I'm writing that down. Autonomous vehicle utopia. Sounds like a new term.
ATU.
Okay, the interim development regulations. So this would be Exhibit 3 of your packet material. So if you can get to the next slide. I'm not going to go through each change, because a lot of this is redundant, but I will give a little, a broad overview of what those updates look like. So adding road corridors and segments, that language into the code, updating references to code sections where appropriate, removing where applicable references to the comprehensive plan, adding concurrency test methodology, and defining road corridor and segment LOS standards as volume to capacity ratio of up to and including 1.1 for corridors and 1.4 for segments for the city's principal and minor arterials. And so this is, this metric breaks that down even into a little bit more detail. Okay, and--
And there was a question about what the impacts are. And, and really, it's just the first bullet, because the second bullet, we, that, that really has nothing to do with the, the interim development regulations in that the city must address all concurrency failures. But as far as the direct, certain impact as a result of these interim development regulations is that the fee to run a concurrency test has increased because of the ongoing failure, or unresolved failure on Sahali. So we've been advised that we cannot actually make the, the failure worse. So in order for us to determine that, we have to run the concurrency test for every single applicant. In the past, what we did is we, we did not run the model, we ran the model for every 10 trips. And we would issue the certificates of concurrency and then just charge the applicant 1/10 of the cost. But again, because of the unresolved failure on Sahali, each applicant now has to bear the, the full cost of running the traffic model. There are other costs clearly on the, on the part of the, the applicant, but we, we can't quantify them. So I don't want to say that this is the only negative, or the only impact of the development regulations, it's just the one that, that we know for sure and, and can quantify.
So for example, if somebody wants to build an ADU in their backyard on Sahali Way, they would have to pay this almost $5,000 fee to, so even if it's for one unit?
They would have to do that regardless of where they are in the city, not just if they're, if they live on Sahali. Because what happens is, say that somebody wants to build something on Southeast 8th. And that, what might happen is that they might only generate a few trips, and, and they might go down 244th, but that increased traffic on 244th might bump somebody to go down Sahali instead. So we, we have to run the traffic model, even if they're in Trossacks, we have to run the traffic model.
How about if there's a preschool, you know, you have a Montessori school and they want to add another room--
Definitely.
--to their school because they have a huge demand? How does that affect, how does this affect them as well?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, that one.
Okay, so they would have to pay this fee and have you run the concurrency model. So it's for any change that happens in a city, which will add additional trips.
Exactly. Right. Thanks.
I thought, excuse me, but I thought on that--
No. Going back to that slide, I-- Pardon?
Oh, hold on. This is the code section.
They're exempt, they're exempt from the concurrency, from meeting concurrency, but we still run the traffic model. Actually, I take that back.
Let me look at the code.
Yeah, no, we don't run, I'm sorry, that, that's correct. We do not run a traffic model on these.
Nope.
Honest expansion, although it says no additional.
No additional trips.
No addition, yeah.
Then it wouldn't apply for that preschool situation either?
No, it would apply to the preschool. That is--
It looks like it probably wouldn't if they're under 100 square feet.
If it's under 100 square feet, they wouldn't, but if it's over, it would.
This might be a little in the weeds. I'm just curious, it said something about tenant improvements also, and not, I'm assuming that some tenant improvements might not--
That's correct.
I mean--
Yes.
If it's in a commercial building--
I'm sorry, they do not need to, they, they are exempt.
ADUs are exempt. Thank you.
And then tenant improvements, would, would they always incur one? I mean, if you have a commercial space that was permitted, have so many tenants there, and there's a new use going in there, and they're not increasing the overall, or do they have to prove that they're not? You know what I mean?
If they do not generate additional trips, they're exempt.
My suspicion is if it doesn't change the use, then it probably is not tested.
And then, may I ask, if we make those changes to Sahali and Sahali's no longer failing, what then? What, what does that look like?
I, we would probably go back to our, our previous practice, which is we collect 10 and then run it--
Okay.
--and then prorate the cost.
Okay. But because of Sahali right now, it's every single--
That's right.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions before we open up the public hearing?
I have several that I didn't hear an answer to, so, but I want to wait and see if anyone else has any.
I do have one question. I do have one question. On the intersection level of service slide, you mentioned dropping to E. If, why not just put it at E right now rather than wait until we get to a point where we're looking at it? Do we not know what intersections might need to be expanded?
I think that's just city policy of how much congestion, and again, a level of service standard is a line in the sand, and so I think the preference is if we can put improvements in place at that intersection, these are principal arterial intersections, and maintain a level of service D standard, so no more than that. Turn member, the amount of seconds, I think that was 55 seconds, yes. I think that's, that was viewed by the folks that developed this policy to be favorable. However, there was a recognition that at what point is delay reduction important and what are we balancing? And I think it's just when the intersection needs to be widened to a certain point, that's when there was a recognition that maybe, you know, we should permit some more development or it's a more, excuse me, some more delay. So again, there's lots of improvements you can add to an intersection to improve its performance that, you know, that aren't necessarily adding lanes up to, you know, kind of that widen. I mean, it's changing signal timing, sometimes there are minor changes you can make to the intersection geometry that can improve its performance. So I think that's, that's why it's, it's an aspiration to stay at D as long as we can until you get to the point where you really need to widen it to be a very large footprint facility.
Okay, I'll ask a few of mine and maybe someone else will jump in with something. The V-over-C numbers, do you have any examples of other municipalities or jurisdictions or so forth that use this type of a test? And how does that work or is there anything similar to us? What kind of numbers do they use?
Yes. So volume-to-capacity ratios along roadway segment, roadway segment analysis, that is actually a more common practice for counties. So there's a number of counties that use volume-to-capacity along roadway segments. So Snohomish County uses it, Thurston County uses it, Kittitas County uses it, Shalane County uses it. Then King County actually has a travel time standard. There are lots of communities that look at roadway segments, but sometimes it's more of a travel time or a speed comparison. Intersections, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, is by, far and away, the most common type of measure to be used by a community. I will say, the city of Seattle, until very recently, actually used a screen line standard. So that wasn't just one roadway segment, volume-to-capacity, but it was looking along multiple roadway segments along what you call a screen line. So it's just an imaginary line, but it operates very similarly to this. With respect to the methodologies that we're talking about here, and I think that's more to your question of who uses these FDOT standards versus these highway capacity manual standards, say, all of those communities that I mentioned, all of those counties that I mentioned, they do use either FDOT or highway capacity manual.
And I guess the related question, is there any, how do those jurisdictions, when they're choosing a V-over-C, choose a number? Is there a guidance for that, or is it jurisdiction by jurisdiction contemplating what's right for them, that sort of thing?
That's correct.
My next question is, I think it seems to me that it's relatively obvious when you look at the list, that Sahali's the failure, but the failure is really close. And the question that most people would ask is, has anybody talked at all about knowing that this is a failure? In order to solve this failure, is this one choice, an $80 million, or whatever number you could pick, right? You could pick a different number. Or are there small things that fix that failure? It's a roadway without a lot of options, but I'm just wondering if anybody has started talking about that to determine what our path forward might look like.
Did you want to start? That's a good question. So we are, I've actually asked Kendra's traffic modeler, DEA, to look at a couple of options that we've proposed to council, and some of them are kind of minor, you know, add, well, actually, maybe adding a slip lane is not minor, but in regards to widening, you know, the roadway, it's certainly minor. So we're in the process of doing that right now, and we'll see what happens. There are some other options that we have offered to council, and to date, they want to stay with the 1.4 V-over-C for the corridor. So, you know, you could widen the road, you could add some of these other features that might add a little bit more capacity. We are adding the ITS system all the way from 12th, actually, all the way to 202. We're tying in with WashDOT and King County's signals to help improve the operational efficiency of that corridor as well. So that'll give us a little bit of a bump. We have, we have allowed for that in the 1.12, I think that's, that's the number, but that project is, is, actually, we just are in the process of hiring a consultant to get that project underway. And actually, you know, let me say too, the, we've, we've been working on the transportation master plan kind of off and on for the last couple of years, and one of the outcomes of that TMP is to offer options for pedestrians, for vehicle, for drivers, for transit, for bicyclists, to get on and off the plateau and move within the, within the city. And that, we're hoping to, you know, address Sahali and then get to the TMP to really open up the box of options for moving around the city, which may actually help, help the traffic congestion on Sahali without actually having to do a lot to Sahali itself. But until we can get that far, we can't really bring that to the planning commission and then to the community certainly, and then to council for their consideration. So I don't know if that fully answers your question. We hope that the modeling that we're doing right now will give us just that extra little bit of capacity so that Sahali will pass concurrency, and then we can, we can jump back onto the transportation master plan.
So just sort of related to that, does, does this failure, adopting this system and then the resulting failure force the city's hand? In other words, are we forced to deal with this?
Yeah.
In other words, you kind of described a process where we fix this and then create a TMP or work on the updated TMP. Is that essentially what has to happen, or does the city have any choice about the situation?
You mean a choice about the TMP or-
About fixing this failure or not? Or even prioritizing the fix of this failure or not?
So what I understand, and Kendra can correct me, but according to the Growth Management Act, we must address any failure in the system that doesn't meet the city's adopted level of service.
Yeah, and this is an existing failure, right, which is different than a-
That's right. That's right.
Follow-up on Mark's question, would that burden fall on the city to fix that failure completely on the city and its residents to fix that failure?
Yeah, and I think, I think your question maybe relates to impact fees. So there's, so first of all, in terms of my understanding, given that we've set a performance standard for Sahali, yes, that needs to be a high priority for the city to address that. In terms of how you fund the improvement of Sahali, I think you do have some choices. I mean, yes, is there an existing deficiency along Sahali? Yes, there is. Is it an impact fee-eligible project? I would make the argument that yes, it is as well. What you would need to do is calculate kind of, when, when impact fees are done, you can do a calculation to essentially identify that portion of the cost of the project that is attributable to addressing the existing deficiency, and that, that component can't be funded by impact fees. Now, how the city funds it, there's, there's a lot of choices. It could be through your existing transportation dollars. You could go out and get a grant if you, you know, develop a really compelling project along Sahali, and there may be some outside funding sources that would then could be used and matched with a combination of impact fees and other city dollars to fund that project. And I think it all goes back to, well, what is this project that we're looking at? And I think, you know, Commissioner Bogman is, you know, kind of asked some good questions. There might be some smaller things that can be done, and those we're looking into. It could be things that are even on Sahali that actually improve the performance of that roadway facility. So those are all questions that we're currently grappling with.
And can I ask, I wanted to make sure I'm making this right assumption, so we're talking about the failure in Sahali, but we're also assuming that we are, we are fixing or it's fixed the Issaquah Falls City Road. So that's the assumption, that that's done, dusted, we've already fixed it, we've moved on, and that our only issue is Sahali? So that's the assumption under all that argument, is that the Issaquah Falls City Road is done and it's no longer failing, and that the only failure we have is Sahali. But right now, at like this point in time, we have not fixed it, right? And that project hasn't started yet either. So we've really got two failures, really, in real time, we've got really two failures. And so that's kind of an underlying assumption that we're making, just so we just need to keep that in our mind, too, that we still, we have six years, is that it, to get that project underway, which will be probably a massive financial undertaking, to say the least, right? So we still have to keep that in mind as well, but yeah.
So we have two failures just for the road corridor and segments, but there are more failures for the intersections. But the intersections, all of the intersections are included in the six-year tip. In regards to the Issaquah Falls City Road, we're waiting for a couple of more permits, and then we'll go out to bid. So the project is 100% designed. I think we have a public meeting, I want to see, March 20th for the, for that project as well. We've, we've been waiting for quite a while, actually, for this one permit for the Army, from the Army Corps. And it typically takes quite a long time to get their permit, but we're so close on that project.
And then Cheryl, the other part of this whole thing on it, because I know concurrency is just one segment of this whole thing of moving us more efficiently throughout our city, in connecting our roads to each other, like our internal road system, and making those, those connections, and I know part of it is part of town center, making some of those extra road connections, maybe some barriers that we still have not lifted in some neighborhoods around the city to connect roads more clearly. So that we, we have other things as well, which I think would be part, is that, am I right in saying that would be part of the transportation master plan? So that connectivity. So there are other tools in our toolbox that we can use to kind of help move us more efficiently around the city and out, out to the other jurisdictions, right?
Definitely. Maybe you can show that one slide.
The planning tools?
There are a number of tools. This is a great segue to the broader conversation that we really are anxious to have with the community-
Right.
...and, and certainly with the planning commission, the council, and other interested parties and stakeholders. So Kendra can explain this table a little bit better, but we developed this to try to put the concurrency tool in context with a whole lot of other, other tools that we have.
I think, I think that's, that's well said. Just to orient you to this, this kind of table on the left, you can see kind of a bunch of these tools that we've identified, and I'd say this probably isn't even an exhaustive list, but all of these things are things that your city staff are grappling with and thinking about on a daily basis. And then just to recognize that these tools each serve different purposes. So some are helping them to identify capital projects that are needed, some are helping them to figure out how they can make the system operate more efficiently, and some are really to help them to better manage development approvals. So just thinking about that we've got many, many tools in our toolbox, just as, as Commissioner O'Farrell said, there's, you know, many types of transportation projects that we can think about, not just major capital projects. So just thinking about that we've got, we've got a robust arsenal in front of us, and, you know, while these projects are daunting, you know, I'd remind you that as a community, you've got the highest impact fees in the state, you've got a very affluent population, very well-educated, very supportive of transportation improvements. So I think for, you know, of any of the communities that I practice in, I think this is one of the happier stories in terms of things that you can achieve.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
It's only the modelable fixes that will improve the outcome of those numbers, right? So any fixes that we might do that might actually make, make things better, that it's not going to be reflected in the model because they're not variables that can be put in? Is that true?
Yes, I mean, that, that's very true, that there are some things that aren't going to be measured. I will give council credit, that's actually why some of those factors that we're taking into consideration that are, that go beyond what the highway capacity sixth edition considered. So making sure we're taking into account turn lanes and ITS and flashing yellow arrows, I mean, that was something that council really pushed for, and I think that's, that's a great improvement. What I would say is that, you know, concurrency, again, is just one tool, is just one blunt tool for measuring the operation of the system. What it tells us is that Sahali Way needs help, and I don't think anyone in this room would really dispute that finding. I think as we come up with more sophisticated ideas of improvements that you might, more connectivity or more transit, we could actually supplement the model to make the model reflect the improvements of those projects. And connectivity is one that your model is sensitive to. If you have more connectivity in the city, fewer vehicles would be on Sahali, we'd still have that same capacity estimation, and maybe we can get to a place where it's meeting that standard. So I'd say that your tools, you know, what we've put forward, aren't terrible. I think, you know, even the VC standard may not, maybe okay, but what we haven't gotten to is really understanding what kind of our long-term transportation fixes are and fully understanding those, because we haven't gotten a chance to kind of review those yet.
I was going to save some of this to after public comments, because I'm interested in hearing, but I think I wanted to segue, first of all, what was just said shows the depth that staff and the consultants have gone into. And these slides are so much more, to me, clearer and informative than, we had to grow up with it. But you started to say one thing, and in, in the health community, prevention is probably more important than the cure, and I really like that. And the other thing, if I'm going to be philosophical, some of this might not be solvable very easily because some people, or it has been said, that the invention of the automobile created suburbia. So I wonder if there's an invention that can be created that would reverse suburbia, but I just leave that out there. That is philosophical. Thank you.
Timeline? The Sahali fix, is the six-year timeline ticking, or has it started yet, or are we under any kind of rule for that?
We're two years into it, actually.
Okay, I'm, I'm new, so I'm trying to-
No, that's, no, that's a good observation.
So we're coming up to some pretty big deadlines that we need to make decisions on, correct?
That's right.
All right. Thanks.
I mean, we have done a little bit of, of, I don't know, I guess you could call it early preliminary engineering on Sahali. We did hire a consultant firm to start the design. That was, I want to say maybe three years ago. So we do have some work that we've already done on Sahali. It's not like, you know, we would be starting with, with no engineering work, so.
Typically, how long does a project take, especially when you mentioned like the Army Corps engineers and you, whether you'd have to deal with them on the Sahali project or not, how long does it kind of take generally?
Well, if we compare it to Issaquah Falls City, we did plan on going to construction with, with Issaquah Falls City last year. And I won't say that, that the whole year of delays is due to the Corps, but it is a pretty lengthy process.
So we're talking about a five-year process?
Boy, for Sahali, four is not unreasonable. Yeah, right.
Has growth paid for growth historically? That's kind of the mantra, right? Growth paid for growth. Has it, has that played out if we look back in history?
That's a bit of a, I'll let you, in terms of, oh, boy. That is a policy that the council has, has adopted. That is what we have carried forward- has adopted. That is what we have carried forward when we've evaluated and reassessed our impact fees. Not just traffic impact fees, but park impact fees, school impact fees, I guess not school impact fees, but our parks and traffic impact fees. We have kept that forefront when we determine what those impact fees are. I've certainly heard a lot of comments about whether that actually does pay for that additional growth once you go to construction, because, as we all know, costs generally go up. The longer it takes you to implement a fix, the more expensive the fix is going to cost. So I don't know that I can really answer your question with a definite yes or no. All I can really say, and maybe Kendra can add to it, is that that has been a council, very clear council policy.
I think the question would be a few-fold. One, I don't know, you could go back through your budget documents and see how much impact fees have contributed to transportation capital. But what I would say is that, assuming the city isn't granting a lot of exemptions on impact fees, every house that gets constructed in Semamish is paying roughly $15,000 for new transportation capital capacity. So that's paying for signals and intersections and new turn lanes and sidewalks and bike lanes and a lot of things. That's more than any other community in Washington State generates. The median for the Puget Sound is about $5,000 per household. Some of the communities that I practice in are $1,000 to $3,000 per household. Neighboring Redmond is about $8,000 per household. So I would say that the city is extracting out of the development community a pretty fair number, a pretty high level of revenue. Can't remember exactly where I was going with that, but it's a lot. I guess the other piece, and now I remember where I was going with that, is that Semamish, as you all know, incorporated from King County. And the roadway system that the city inherited from King County was much more primitive than you would expect in an urban environment. It lacked sidewalks, it lacks curb gutter, it lacks, in many cases, bike lanes, and it lacked a lot of the amenity that a suburban community would want. So over the past 20 years, the city has been working to build that infrastructure. And that large capitalist is actually the reason that the city is able to extract such a high impact fee. The state prescribes a pretty standard formula for how impact fees are generated. The city has been following that format. I think your program is very sound. So I would say that I don't, you could make an argument that growth should pay for even more, but you're doing better than any other community that I know of.
And then one quick follow-up related to the comment that Cheryl made about, the longer things take, the longer they cost. Do you have some sense about how close projected road improvement costs have been to actual road improvement costs historically, again?
Boy, no, I don't. But I can look at our historical costs compared to projected and get back to you on that one.
I have a follow-up to that. So you collect impact fees, the impact fees have to get spent on road improvements that are deemed to be done based on the concurrency evaluation?
They have to go towards projects that are on your impact fee project list. So not all of the projects have to be required by concurrency. So that's just kind of, a lot of people get that confused. All day I spend kind of decoupling that. What I would say is that the city can look at all the projects. So first step is the city does its comprehensive plan, and it comes up with its kind of 20-year transportation project list. And then the city wants to craft an impact fee program. So what the city can do is it can take many of the projects that are on that list. When you look at kind of the state law guiding how impact fees are crafted, they have to come out of the comp plan, what we call the capital facilities element. And they also have to be projects that are consistent with what state law says can be spent. So few things that you should know, a standalone trail that isn't related to the street's right-of-way, that's not an eligible impact fee expenditure. But if it's a project that's on your capital facilities element that provides capacity for growth, so, and that can be, capacity can be thought of in a number of ways. It can be certainly adding a new lane, it could be improving in intersections that accommodate more vehicles. Many communities even look at improving a roadway to urban standards. So going from a rural standard to adding a shoulder, a curb, gutter, sidewalk, that makes the road more navigable, more people can use it, so it's got increased capacity. So the city then can grab as many of those projects as it wants to put, and then it can put it in its impact fee program. And then there's some additional calculations that are made to make sure that we're not paying for existing deficiencies, that we're not, you know, we have to actually make sure that we're only paying for growth that's occurring within the community. So there's some prescribed kind of math and procedures that are done. But that's how the city has established its kind of cost-per-trip rate.
So paying for those existing deficiencies. So for example, the Issaquah-Pine Lake Road has been on our TIP for a long time, and we have not worked on that. Would that be considered as an existing deficiency if another development came there and failed the concurrency test? Who would have to pay for that?
So an existing deficiency is if, for example, an intersection or roadway segment isn't meeting your standard. But then what we do as transportation practitioners is we do kind of a relative assessment of the performance of that roadway or intersection segment, and then what the improved facility, how it would operate. And we're able to look at the delay reduction and look at, what is that percentage of delay reduction that was needed just to get to your standard? And then what additional improvement above and beyond your standard has been achieved? It's that above and beyond improvement that's eligible for impact fees.
Got it. Thank you. Oh, sorry, one more. Talking about Pine Lake, I know there's a proposed site for a new elementary school. Has that been factored into these calculations? Or does that, because it's existing students, I don't know how that works. Like, does that need to-
The model does take into account, yeah, schools, whether they're, if it's there in the ground today, then it's factored into the model, and the model knows it's there. And if it's a future expansion or a new school, then the model's actually taking into account.
But only if it's permitted.
Oh, okay.
Right, right. Which it's not right now.
Which is not right now.
Right. But the Issaquah-Pine Lake project is doing a microsimulation of that corridor, and they're probably trying to do some guesswork on this school. I mean, we have some information about the size of the school. I think it's an elementary-
Elementary school.
Elementary school.
So probably like 700, 800 kids, I assume.
Right, right. So we have numbers that we can certainly pull from existing elementary schools, so we can do some scenario planning. But the pipeline model only has constructed or permitted projects in it.
Got it. Thank you.
Sorry, but you keep bringing up things that click things my mind. And I'm doing this from a little scattered memory. I think there's a group from Warden University who has now come out with a new concept that debt is good. National debt is good, because the economy is, now might be the time to do your infrastructures. So, you know, I'm just throwing that out there. And the other thing is, on the way here, I heard the Beatles' song "Let It Be." We're probably not going to have any divine intervention, to shine a light or play the music in the morning. I think that's part of the lyrics. But if the community and the staff and the commissions and the city council, I think they can be your divine guidance if they can get together. Okay.
My last question is, I kind of feel like a little bit of the 800-pound gorilla in the room. So you guys can draw straws over who answers. But a little bit of engineering supposition, which is contradictory, but still I'll ask, what does this really mean? Is Town Center stymied because of the probable failure that will no longer, in other words, they will be adding trips that will certainly go to Sahali? Does that mean Town Center is off the table until we fix this? Does it mean that there's no more substantial development within the city? I mean, you can't say one house here and there, because that's very difficult to predict. But anything substantial, certainly a long plat, to me, unless it's down far south, feels very unlikely to pass this test without impacting Sahali. Practically speaking on the ground, is that what we're talking about? I would point out that I warned you that it was not an easy question.
I guess I would, I would say that, based on our attorney's advice and direction, they've said that we need to run a traffic model with every single development, every single applicant that generates traffic. If there's a development that generates more than one trip down Sahali, the applicant does have options. They can change the scope of their project, they can withdraw, they can contest it. So I think you'll, you know, there's-
Or they can pay for-
There's, you know, consequences that I'm sure are swirling around in your mind. So I can't, you know, look, I don't have that crystal ball at all. All I can tell you is what our attorneys have advised us to do, and that is what we're doing.
And the other option they have is to pay for it themselves, right, the developers?
Absolutely.
Or a group of developers get together and redo Sahali Way and then open up development in the city. I mean, that's another-
Yes, thank you.
Maybe pie in the sky, but it could happen, right?
Yes, they could.
All right. Looks like there's no more questions. Thank you for the presentation. As always, informative, and your tolerance of our questions, as always.
Good questions, good questions.
Appreciated, so thank you. Next, we're going to move on to a public hearing. I do want to just check, does anyone need a short break before we go into the public hearing? Nope, good. So we'll move on to the public hearing. Just a reminder, public hearing, everyone has essentially seven minutes to speak. When you speak, please remember to state your name and address when you start, and Anthony will keep us all on track from a timing standpoint. So I'm opening the public hearing. Would anyone like to make comments on the topic of this evening?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kevin Jones. I'm a principal at Transpo Group. We're a local traffic engineering and transportation planning consulting firm. My address is 12131 113th Avenue Northeast, Suite 203 in Kirkland. I also wanted to mention, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Washington. I'm a certified professional traffic operations engineer, and I'm also a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I just have some written comments I'd like to read into the record. As many of you know, city council significantly expanded Semamish's concurrency program last September, going from testing 23 intersections during the PM peak hour to 43 intersections during the AM and PM peak hours. This represents a near quadrupling of intersection concurrency testing. In November, the council decided to go even further. On an interim basis, it adopted a concurrency program that tests not only these intersections, but also 22 roadway corridors and 70 roadway segments during both the AM and PM peak hours, also setting a maximum volume-to-capacity or VC standard of 1.1 for corridors and 1.4 for segments. The ordinance before you tonight would make those corridor and segment standards a permanent part of the city's concurrency program. On behalf of STCA, who is the entity in the area of the Semamish Town Center, I'd like to cover two areas in my remarks tonight. First, I'll summarize the key flaws with the VC standards. And second, I will offer two recommendations to remedy these flaws while still serving the public's interest in an effective transportation system. At the end, I'll submit into the record an expanded written version of my testimony, along with two recent memos that I'll attach, which I prepared for the council on this topic. But before summarizing the flaws, it is important to note that the decision to adopt these VC standards was made by the council alone, and to my knowledge, at no point did city staff or its consultants recommend that the council go beyond the new intersection standards and adopt VC standards for roadways. So the first flaw, the capacity numbers in the ordinance are a significant underestimate of true capacity. A reasonable capacity number is the foundation of any rational VC test. The flaw in the ordinance is that it uses capacity numbers that are noticeably less than actual capacity. Simply put, these corridors and segments have the capacity to handle more vehicles at reasonable speeds than the table and the ordinance would otherwise indicate. I'd note that neither city staff nor its consultants have disputed this. After my last testimony to council, some responded that the city's capacity estimates are sufficiently reliable because they are based on the Highway Capacity Manual, the HCM. The problem, however, is that the city's VC standards reflect the misuse of the HCM. The HCM estimates capacity based on just two variables, the number of lanes and posted speed limit, as well as several very general assumptions that in many cases do not even apply to Semamish. As a result, the capacity numbers provided by the HCM are, at best, extremely rough and don't consider local factors. The misuse of the HCM would be a problem in any situation, but it is particularly problematic when the unreliable capacity numbers are then used as the basis for a pass-fail concurrency test, where failure means a proposed development is denied and cannot proceed. The HCM states specifically that its capacity estimate should be used as a, quote, "first pass" analysis. Yet the city is now using those numbers for a definitive pass-fail test. This is flawed. Recognizing the inaccuracy of using the HCM to derive capacity numbers, city staff made a hurried effort in November to try and account for additional factors such as existing turn lanes, medians, flashing yellow arrows, and ITS technologies. These adjustments do not adequately reconcile the HCM methodology's fundamental shortcomings when it comes to realistically estimating roadway capacity in Semamish. My memo identifies several roadways whose actual capacity is clearly and demonstratively greater than what is reported in the ordinance. The second flaw, the city's VC standards for roadway corridors and segments are largely arbitrary. The standards of 1.1 for corridors and 1.4 for segments without making a meaningful effort to determine why these standards are more appropriate than, say, 1.5 or 1.8. Some council members have suggested they relied on the recommendations of their consultants during the November 13, 2018 city council study session. But after reviewing the video of that meeting, it is clear to me that their consultants were offering impressions, not necessarily recommendations. Moreover, their consultants raised at least two specific caveats, which the council largely ignored. At the October 22, 2018 city council study session, TSI's Victor Salmon recommended variable VC thresholds depending on the unique characteristics of the city's roadways. And in her comments at the November study session, Fair and Pierce's Kendra Breland suggested that certain corridors should be given, quote, "special treatment" due to their unique character. I tend to agree. Despite these recommendations, council imposed uniform VC thresholds for corridors and segments alike, failing to recognize the unique character of, for example, Sahali Way, which, unlike most other roadways in the city, is directly affected by SR202 congestion. Both Ms. Breland and Mr. Salmon also cautioned the city, cautioned that the city should not impose a VC standard that created a concurrency failure unless the city first determined that resolving that failure was feasible. That type of feasibility analysis was not done before the council adopted its VC standards. Before turning to my recommendations, I'd like to emphasize the unprecedented magnitude of the city's concurrency testing. Forty-three intersections tested in the AM and PM peak hours, that's a total of 86 test points. Ninety-two roadway corridors or segments also tested during the AM and PM peak hours, a total of 184 more test points. This represents a grand total of 270 tests, and all it takes is failure of one, one of these tests to be denied a certificate of concurrency. In my 20-plus years as a transportation consultant, I have never encountered a concurrency program so vast and all-encompassing in terms of the number of intersections and roadways being tested before new development can proceed. The fundamental problem, though, is not as much as the number of tests, as it is the unfairness of the tests and the VC standards in particular. as it is the unfairness of the tests and the VC standards in particular. In previous testimony, I've explained why I believe VC standards are entirely unnecessary, given the city's already extraordinarily comprehensive intersection testing program. Can I have a few more seconds?
Please wrap it up as quickly as you can.
I will. Already extraordinarily comprehensive intersection testing program. If a VC standard is nevertheless desired, I recommend the Planning Commission consider the following to remedy the major flaws in the city's current VC standards. One, give roadway capacity estimates the type of scrutiny the council was unwilling or unable to undertake before. These estimates should be revisited and much more tailored to reflect actual conditions. This should be resolved first for the Sahali Way corridor before any such standard is adopted on a permanent basis. Or, two, move away from uniform VC thresholds for roadway corridors and segments alike and establish a variable thresholds depending on the roadway's unique characteristics. If variable standards are not feasible, a higher uniform standard would be appropriate, given the overall underestimates of capacity in the ordinance. I'd recommend setting a VC standard of at least 1.5 for corridors and at least 1.85 for segments. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, for your comments. Looks like Mr. Stickney is going to make some comments.
Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road, and I'm going to steal a word from the esteemed Ms. Victor. Impromptu, my conversation tonight is not scripted, and it, it will follow along a little bit on the email I sent today, which the chair helped me realize I had something sort of not quite right. I was focused on, on the C capacity in a little bit of the wrong way, and I admit that because I'm not a, you know, traffic engineer. There was a, several things Kevin Jones said is what I was trying to say. And the staff presentation tonight was excellent, and I'm not sure I have this right, but I think the state has got some concurrency standards for a couple types of concurrency that are statewide that you choose from, A through E's and, and, and seconds. And I was happy to hear, and I'm not sure that I heard it right, but I was happy to hear that what Simamish has done is a little bit like the, the land acquisition plan. We went out and trailblazed. So we've set our own standard, which I think we have the right to do, but I don't think there's a state standard for V over C in cities for getting context. And that's what I was trying to say in the email that I sent to you this afternoon in the third part. A brief recap of the email that I sent. The first part was a letter from former council member Don, Don Jerrand, and I did not have to ask him because it was already part of the record from January 15. But he wrote a good article about the arbitrary nature, and that's not negative, it's what is legislative choices in a community. You do get some arbitrariness, I get that. Second thing is, there was some old fudge factors, the term I use, in the old concurrency. Under the old concurrency table T8 and not using AM peak, it probably added some expansion. I was curious as to how much that is. The thing I was trying to say in the third and the fourth part, I don't need to say because Kevin stated it in a way which I was trying to say, is how arbitrary is that? Is it understated or overstated? That's what I was trying to say. Now, a couple comments, and this hangs together with concurrency, but it also hangs together with some of the things I've been talking about of changing land use. There was talk tonight about the 2024 and the 2035, asking whether Town Center Plan is in or not, asking about land use for the future. I have a simple statement, and then I'd like to give you five or six points to consider from a holistic point of view. I'm, am suggesting that we, as a city, reverse course on our lane capacity and transportation major road projects. Yes, we stay with the, with the six-year CIP, but I'm suggesting that we change land use and create the types of housing our community is short of and create far less car trips, limit the types of housing. We have oversupply that creates far more car trips. Right-size economics to those two choices. Do internal and external and regional transit to those three choices, and use TDMs, Transportation Management, to lessen the capacity of how our current comp plan is forecasting compared to a altered comp plan that would optimize housing, optimize economics, optimize transit, and then see if the road projects are needed, and if they are, if they are done, to a city that is far more optimized, advantageous, productive for our future. Last comment, this is not throwing any stones, I think these are all facts, but I don't know the numbers behind the facts. When, how many, how much capital impact fees were collected by King County before Simamish Incorporated in 1999 in what is now Simamish? And where did they spend the money? Next, what were King County's capital improvement plans at the time of incorporation? And I don't know if they call them CIPs or TIPs or XYZs, but they had, they, they had a plan of roads that needed to be done. We inherited that at the time that we incorporated as a city, we as the Kings, we, all of us together. The city, in its 2003 comp plan, it identified over 30 or 40 existing deficiencies. There's a massive transportation element in the 2003 comp plan, plus two or three exhibits that list all these projects. The city has had, had 19 years of capital improvement since we've incorporated. Every year, there's been a six-year TIP. What percentage of those projects were done to add lane capacity? And I'm not casting a single stone at, at, at the complete streets. That's awesome, but our current concurrency isn't giving any credit for those complete streets. Then the last couple of comments is, it's my understanding, and I may be wrong, that the city did not spend general funds on road projects or take out debt, as, you know, Commissioner Crandall said. What's the point? Is that we're creating a fairly strict standard for not spending any money or hardly any money or solving all the problems. It would be one thing had most of that money been spent, or most of those identified projects, had those been done and we were failing, that's a whole nother kettle of fish, but that's not the case. That's my comment.
Nicely timed. Thank you for your comments, Paul.
Hello, my name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Simamish. First of all, welcome, new Planning Commissioners. Thanks for the great presentation again. You guys are doing an awesome job answering things, and I thought Planning Commissioners had really, really good questions tonight. I learn every time I come, and I think the thinking that you're doing is great. I'm celebrating this month, my fourth year, I'm working on stormwater issues. So I've been going to a lot of city meetings, and I think Cheryl Paston was Deputy Public Works Director just when I first started doing that. So I attended a lot of the meetings, and I remember John Cunningham, who had been Public Works Director for a long time, left. There was another one, and then he came back as interim. So in the Sahali meetings, I remember that Sahali was failing. People thought it wasn't failing, it was failing in the past. Some of those were safety issues. And when we had the meetings, they were looking at a three or five lane, and the three lane was adding some things and making it look nicer, but it wasn't really working, and everybody knew about the 202 problem. And I did not look these up, I'm going to give these numbers off the top of my head, maybe I got them wrong. I believe it was about 14, $14.3 million to do Sahali. And then there was a five-lane project that they kind of rough looked at, and I think, and I'm winging that number out of my head again, was about $78 million. So obviously, that was going to cost a lot of money. And I remember back when Mark Cross, who's one of my neighbors, was on council, they had looked at doing East Lake-Simamish Parkway and making that multi-lane and kind of doing piers and stuff, and that was going to be like a $100 million fix. So that's why those road things weren't done. And Mark Cross also has experience doing a lot of permitting over the years, and he told me, he said, one of the problems the city had is every year they had about $3 million to do, like, some road projects, but they only had enough staff so they could really only get through $2 million. Because even if you use consultants for everything, you still need to have an internal person who does the bidding and when you're short staff. So we kind of got behind. And I remember Lyman Howard, when he was city manager, he had said a few times at some of the committee meetings I went to, that what we should have done is when the housing market fell in 2007, 2008, that's when we should have been doing the road projects because it wasn't going a lot. So we got to where we are through not having enough staff, not doing things, not fixing things. And I remember John Cunningham, who was the interim Public Works Director and Public Works Director for a long time, very smiley, even-keeled guy, but I remember one meeting where he stood up and he's like, "We have to do Sahali, we can't not do Sahali." So it wasn't done, and there is a lot of things that goes to the north, and you need to do something. I believe, I went through several of the community meetings, and there was good input, but people were like, "Hey, if we're not getting added capacity, just, we can't spend the money." So that's kind of why it didn't get done. In some of the discussions that I've heard and some of the council things, a switchable lane was not considered, like, instead of a median having a left-turn lane, so you'd have two down in the morning and then two up in the afternoon, I believe that's doable, I believe that would help. I don't think going to the five lanes is going to work, I don't think it's feasible. I don't think a four lane, I forget why that wasn't considered, but it was bike lanes and all the other stuff. You have a lot of landslide stuff in the area. So you do have to do something. I remember Victor Salman, who's one of the consultants who also worked, he said several things that are just astoundingly kind of simple. You can't do the road projects right away, you can't change things right away, you've got time. He said a couple things you can do. He said if you reduce speed limits, and I know everybody's going to shoot me when I say that, if you reduce the speed limit, it actually improves the throughput. Like, I haven't driven through Redmond with green lights recently because they changed their one-way lanes. But in the old days, when I caught all the green lights, it was awesome because I didn't stop and I didn't get those delays. And that's what reducing the speed limit does. The other thing he said is if you reduce the speed limit, you don't have to rail the roads to the same standard, it becomes cheaper from sight distances and other things. So I think that is one thing. And my son, my second son, when he was learning to drive, he was in algebra or calculus or something, and he says, "Hey, I figured out if I'm driving, if I want to get to my work on time," he goes, "if I drive 10 miles an hour over the speed limit, it only saves me three minutes." He goes, "It's just not worth it." So just the speed limit thing, I think, is big. The other thing, and I think Pam Stewart said this best on council, she said, "You don't want to set your numbers where, like, congestion around Inglewood in the morning is going to cause you to do these great big road projects because it's really just too many cars going." So I spoke at the Parks Commission meeting last night. You have Mead, McAuliffe, Smith, Blackwell, and Rachel Carlson, each of those elementary schools in Lake Washington School District, which is not the Isokua one. They have about 500, 600 students, and at one point, Smith was up to 800 students. All those people, however they get to school, walk, ride, go with their friends or drive, when they start going to Inglewood, if the parents are driving them all and they're, and then they're all going to work, you're going to end up with a cluster, cluster there that you just, there isn't anything that's going to fix it. So even though you, if you set the perfect VC, if you're not doing things to take cars off the road, you've kind of got a problem. And I got that from Mark Cross, who I spoke with this morning as we were doing garbage cans. So I think you need to do things, and one of those things is improving connectivity. The Lama Landing, you can walk from Smith to Inglewood, you can walk from McAuliffe to Inglewood. Blackwell's a little bit far, maybe Mead's a little bit far. There's also a lot of parents that would help students walk, have got a problem. And Inglewood used to be a junior high, seventh through ninth grades, it's now a middle school from sixth through eighth grades. But those kids are old enough. I used to walk home from my elementary school when I was in fourth grade, because it was three miles, there was no shoulders, it was a rural road, but it was way easier than getting on the bus to go to the middle school, the junior high, high school, and get home later. I made that decision on my own, I used to buy a little pie at the thrift store on the way home. Never got hit, and I was lucky, but I think we need to think about some of those things. The other thing Victor Salman said is, he called it off-peak shifting. And if you know what that is, if you're a family and you're married, you've got kids, one of the parents goes to school, to work early in the morning, so they get off early to get the kids in the afternoon, and then the other one, so you're not both driving at the same time. And Victor said, "Not everybody needs to do that." Maybe Microsoft doesn't tolerate people doing that. I have a Microsoft person who lives on my street who rides a bike to work every day, he doesn't have to go until 10:00, so I know they have different things they do. But if you can, Victor said, "If you can switch even 10% to 15% of the people, you can really, really make a difference." These are things we can do. We can tell people school bell times, we can have more people ride the bus, we can have walkability solutions, and you can do all that while you're considering what the perfect VC is, and that could be done starting communicating today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mary. Is there anyone else who would like to make comments as part of the public hearing? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. So next is for us to discuss this, and we need to start out with a motion, if you're so inclined, so that we can have a discussion, perhaps even a debate, about this topic. So would anyone be inclined to make a recommended motion?
So I'd like to recommend a motion that we moved, we moved to recommend to City Council to adopt the amendments to Chapters 14A.05, 14A.10, and 21A.15 of the Simamish Municipal Code as presented by staff.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we recommend a council to adopt the amendments in the chapters that were referenced in the Simamish Municipal Code per the presentation. Is there any discussion or debate?
I can start. Oh, sorry, Josh, you want to go first? Firstly, I want to thank the staff and Kendra for doing this wonderful presentation. I think it was very detailed but simple at the same time. I want to thank the member of the public who have come here in their individual and professional capacity to give public comment on concurrency. You know, these models and methods are extremely complex, and I think we've been following them throughout last year. And I think, I want to acknowledge that there is a tremendous effort and financial resources that were poured in throughout last year, because I think it was the council's number-one priority to address the traffic issue, and I think they have worked extremely hard on coming up with these recommendations and calculations. I also want to acknowledge that the City Council last year actually held joint meetings with the Planning Commission so that we could come up to speed and also speed along the process. And I think what has happened in that is typically, you know, the Planning Commission would take something on, deliberate on that, and make recommendations to the City Council. For me, this seems a little bit other way around. I think we have been given a solution, and so I'm a little confused on what to do with that going forward, especially after hearing all the comments. So for me, it just seems that the council has already come to a decision on what they want to do, and I think, you know, as many questions were raised today, we have lots of solutions in how these issues can be fixed, you know, TMP, other improvements to the road. But all of those carry financial obligations, which is not within the scope of the Planning Commission. So I don't feel comfortable making any changes to what has been proposed. So given the subject at hand, you know, its complexity and its opacity around the financial obligations, what I would like to recommend is that we do not take any formal recommendation on this, on the, especially V over C. on this, especially V over C, and maybe the council is probably the best body to take this forward.
Just kind of want to echo what Ritu said. Thank you. Said, "There's been a lot of work done on this, but being new to the commission, I've tried to get caught up on everything that's been done." And I would also think that making a recommendation from the commission to the council, in my mind, is not the best move. I don't know that I could vote to recommend at this point, so I think, based on our purview, to me, the best bet might be to just not make a recommendation. They've already made up their minds, so that's my feelings on it.
I went back and I rewatched the last probably four city council meetings on concurrency, and that was noted in our packet, and I rewatched, so I don't know whether it was 10 hours or 15 hours. The council worked really hard, and the staff worked really hard in it. So I am in favor of this motion. I would recommend it. I listened very intently in all the discussions. There was a discussion on capacity and how those capacity numbers were brought about. There was a discussion on the V over C and the 1.1, and it went, it was a long discussion. So I feel like all the issues were really discussed very well at city council, and it was really teased out, and they even had a workshop, an unexpected workshop that happened to kind of tease that even further. So I feel comfortable doing my part and recommending it to city council.
Larry or Mark?
Everything that I would have said has already been said. Yeah, I share a lot of the thoughts. I think there was deep dives. I don't feel that I could intelligently make recommendations any other way, really, than what have been recommended. I could echo also Mary's suggestion about these other kind of novel ideas, off-peak shifting. The entire construction industry has off-peak shifted for decades in when they go to work. So engaging major employers in that, I think, could be very powerful and would be free or nearly free. The other thing I didn't hear a lot about, and I'd encourage, and I think someone said something about educating, Larry's always talking about educating, educating the public about the impact of single occupancy vehicles on the traffic problem. I haven't seen any pamphlet or flyer in the mail. It would be great to see one in the mail and say, "Hey, did you know?" And give the general public a little more insight into some of this great data that we've seen over the last few months. And I was just really shocked about some of these, the single occupancy, 90% of the vehicles are single occupancy vehicles, where you could take half of those and get two people in them, and then all of a sudden, we don't have any failures, you know? So without, again, without spending a dime. So I'm hoping that those types of things are still being discussed. That's all I got.
I guess I'll echo my echo. Driver's behavior goes hand in hand with public awareness. So once we get moving forward, and it sounds like we have between completion time and getting these projects done, is between zero and probably four to five years, somewhere in there, probably closer to the side. But during that time, continue not only the involvement of the public, but the education and awareness, because I'll give Mary credit for this. If it's posted 35 miles an hour speed limit, that's the maximum, folks. Sorry, but that is the maximum speed limit. We have to take those things into consideration. That's enough.
So I'll offer a couple of my thoughts about this. First off, I would reemphasize, I guess, that the, this has been a topic of conversation in the last council. In this council, it's been hashed for almost two years. It's been discussed and debated. It's been debated in public, on Facebook and council, and it's been covered quite thoroughly. And I think that, I'm not sure myself whether 1.1 and 1.4 is right, but I'm not sure that that's also a critical piece of information, because when I look at it, there's people on one side saying the number should be higher. Yeah, they probably could be higher, but there's failures that I know of because I personally experienced them on a regular basis out there that we've known for a long time, Sahali being at the top of the list, that we need to deal with. And the model essentially, at these numbers and the way it's prescribed, identifies that as a problem. That, to me, is a pretty strong indicator that it does what it's supposed to do. Now, I think there's also other failures that exist that the model doesn't identify. So perhaps that means we shouldn't be raising the numbers higher because we do have issues that, around the schools in particular, and there are some that I think that the model should identify, and it doesn't. So I guess what I'm saying is that the numbers are kind of, you could debate 1.1 and 1.2 and 1.22 for an endless amount of time, and the council's kind of already done that. But in the real world, we have some failures, and this model is getting us in the direction of identifying those, both at the intersection-level service part of it, as well as the corridor and segment part of it. That, to me, suggests that it probably works fairly well. And on top of which, we will have the opportunity to revisit, right? I mean, these things are somewhat static, but not forever. So if it gets implemented and we all determine that no development occurs, and that's not what we wanted, and we can't figure out how to fix our primary failure, and we aren't unwilling to spend the money, then we may need to revisit it and change 1.1 and 1.4 to something else. And I think that's one of the nice parts about this, is that we're not chiseling this in stone forever. We will have the opportunity to do something different later. So given those facts, I don't know that I'm intelligent enough to pick the right number. I don't know that anybody can necessarily be right about it or wrong about it. We have a number that sort of seems to reflect reality. It's been thoroughly debated. The council is probably, you're right, made up their mind. I guess, given those facts, I would like to, as I've said many times in the past, move on to other things, the transportation master plan, some of the budget challenges that we have, and so forth. So if we can contribute to moving this along so that we can start to deal with some of the other problems in the city, then I'm in favor, and I would vote to approve and to recommend to the city council. I would say, we still do have the opportunity, I'll remind all of you, to also suggest side things that maybe should be considered, not today, not tomorrow, but as the process proceeds to the next step or the next time this gets revisited. So if you have, you know, ideas about that, whether it's now or later, we can also consider those things as well. So I will be voting in favor of the motion for those reasons.
Looking at the schedule, I would call for the question and, at the same time, ask for extension of the meeting tonight to 9:00, just to be safe. Okay. I think call for the question.
Well, okay, so let's be clear. A call for the question requires a second. Does someone want to second that?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we cease discussion and debate and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no? I forgot to say aye. I was an aye. The question's been called and approved, so we will now, let's do extend the meeting first. So you moved to extend the meeting until?
9:00 PM.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting to 9:00. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, we've extended the meeting until 9:00. Now, we, since we have called and approved the question, we will go ahead and vote on, and I will restate the motion. The motion is to recommend to the city council to adopt amendments to chapters 14A.05, 14A.10, and 21A.15 of the Samamish Municipal Code as presented by staff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion passes.
So as this was procrastination week, the second week in March, as most of us know, I don't know if you're supposed to procrastinate or not procrastinate, so I would say I move
I'm not sure how to take that, Larry. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And we are adjourned. Thank you all.